Here, so welcome to the Morrison County Planning Commission meeting for June third, or June eleventh, sorry, twenty twenty-four. Please rise for the flag pledge.
We're pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, a few items to cover before we get started. Please sign in at the door if you have not done so already, right up where you walked in. There you also find a detailed handout of the step-by-step procedure we will follow tonight. If you wish, please take one. Please put any electronic devices on silent mode at this time. Also, please note that all testimony is being recorded for the record. Members of the Planning Commission are appointed by the County Board of Commissioners with one member from each of the five Commissioner districts. Land Services staff is here to assist the Planning Commission with its duties. The task of the Planning Commission is to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to County Board of Commissioners for approval or denial of requests for conditional and interim use permits, rezones, plats, and ordinance amendments in accordance with state law and county ordinance. The burden of proving a request meets the criteria for approval rests with the applicant. There's a protocol for how we will proceed tonight. For each request on the agenda, we will hear a staff report, hear testimony from the applicants, and then we will discuss and gather more information as needed. Next, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak to the request. I will ask each party to come to the podium, that's the wooden one there by the door, to state their name and address for the record and give their testimony. Please be as factual as possible and direct all statements and questions to me. After all testimonies complete, I will close the public hearing portion of this process. The Planning Commission will then review and discuss the case in terms of defining a fact criteria as required by Minnesota statute and county ordinance. We will have a series of votes, discuss whether conditions be made. Then there will be a final motion to recommend approval or denial to the County Board of Commissioners. After this final vote on your request, you may leave if you wish. The County Board of Commissioners will then consider the request and our recommendation at their next regular meeting and will either grant or deny the request. So for the Planning Commission, we have one agenda, or one item on the agenda, and that is Robert Munson, one eight, three one one, Highway twenty-five, Peers. Application for an interim use permit to expand an existing auto repair shop located in Pointe's southeast quarter, of southeast quarter, section fifteen, Township forty-one, Range thirty, Boo Township. So if you'd please state your name for the record.
Robert Munson.
Okay, thank you, Robert. I guess at this time we'll start with Amy's ready for with the staff report. You can go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mr. Chair. Again, this is a request to expand an existing automotive repair shop, and it's located in section fifteen of Boo Township. The ordinance references are section five oh six point eight and six oh four point seven. And then here's a plat map of Boo Township, and here, the red dot is the location of the parcel. And then here's the interim permit request received from the applicant, along with a site drawing also provided by the applicant. And then here are some drawings of the proposed building. Here's an aerial photograph of the property, and that's outlined in blue. And then just here's another image of that. This is a one point eight nine acre parcel on the corner of State Highway twenty-five and State Highway forty-six. An automotive shop has operated on the site since before land use controls were adopted. The applicant requests an interim use permit to expand the existing auto repair shop by constructing a twenty by fifty addition to the existing shop. That addition would be utilized for office and counter space, and that addition would meet all setbacks. The applicant did attend a development review team meeting, and the proper storage and disposal of automotive fluids and waste was discussed. The applicant indicated that he is aware of these requirements, and the building has no floor drains. The applicant is the service provider at the site, and he does not anticipate having any employees in the future. Uses on adjacent parcels are primarily rural residences and crop fields. The nearest residence is about five hundred seventy feet to the north. There is a tree line that provides screening on the north and west sides of the property, and no new road entrances are proposed. Here's a zoomed out aerial photo with that nearest residence shown. The applicable comprehensive plan goals and objectives is agriculture goal A one, objective six, goal A two, objective one, and then local economic development goal C one and objective one, also objective eight, and then goal C two, objective one, two, four, and seven, and then also nineteen. Suggested conditions for this would be abide by all applicable state and local laws regarding automotive repair and proper disposal of fluids and wastes, maintain records of disposal of automotive fluids and wastes, and provide for review of records at the request of the Land Services Department. And three, no outdoor storage of vehicles or vehicle components, except for the vehicles, excuse me, on site for service, shall be located on the property. Twenty notices were sent, and no comment was received prior to this hearing. And then here are your use criteria questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Amy. So I guess at this time, Robert, do you have anything to add to what the staff report was, or?
Nope.
Okay. So then we'll probably go into our board. If any, anybody on our Planning Commission board has any questions for the applicant or staff, I guess now's the time.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Marv.
Okay, so how long have you owned the business?
Since ninety-eight.
Okay, ninety-eight, because it, I've driven past it numerous times, and it used to be known as Ottman's Corner, and it was a very busy place. And, but one thing I, I don't know if you, we were, just went over the suggested conditions, and it talked about no outdoor storage of vehicle components or, except vehicles on the site that need a service. I mean, we could bring up the topographical map, but I think, you know, that you look on the thing, you have quite a few vehicles there.
Yeah, they've been removed. Twenty-two of them have been.
Okay, good.
This winter I did it. The guy that passed away that actually was taking them before, so there was probably a three-year lag there that I didn't have any money picking them up, so then this winter I got rid of them. Twenty-two of them.
Okay, yeah, because I've, I've noticed that it's driving by.
It was gonna be a mess, so, yeah.
Yeah, I've driven by quite a few times, and anyhow, I seen all them around, and I says, well, I don't know if you're really abiding by this, and you know, that's part of our criteria, so. Yeah, and obviously twenty notices were sent, and nobody has said anything, never heard about any violations or anything else, and know a lot of people that live around there, and they've never complained about it, so. But that's, that's all I have at this point, and you have no problem with these conditions?
No.
Okay, so it's good. Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you, Marv.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Brent.
On those same lines there, Robert, I drove by there on my way in tonight, and I counted like twenty-four cars that were still out there currently. As of today, are those all cars that are being repaired, or are some of those yet to be removed?
Some of them are to be removed yet, but like in the front, them are all to be repaired. And there's probably four on the south side that are in the works of waiting for parts and stuff like that, so.
So along that line of questioning, how many cars, vehicles, do you anticipate being on-site moving forward?
For like, being repaired?
Well, we're expanding, expanding your business and the footprint there, so that'll take up some room, but you've got twenty-four vehicles on-site now. Some of those, arguably twenty-five are for repair, four are to be yet removed.
Let's see, I'm gonna count in my head. There's three in the back, and then there's like six on that south side that, no, there's one. Yeah, probably six on that south side that are to be disposed of yet, and then the rest are to be repaired.
Okay, and do you anticipate that being an ongoing number of
Repairs.
Currently being repaired vehicles moving forward, or do you anticipate that being increased?
No, it'll get less, I'm sure, yeah.
Okay. Moving on to other questions, you talked about the fluids are picked up by Eastside Oil, is that correct?
Yep, and then I burn waste oil.
And you burn the waste oil, so the waste oil is burned on-site?
Yep.
That isn't picked up?
Correct.
Okay, and there are no floor drains?
Nope.
And your cleanup is floor drains for spills, and how do you dispose of that?
There really isn't any. I mean, it's, I don't do any heavy work. It's just mainly break jobs and stuff like that, so.
Okay. And the well, if I looked at, if I looked at your drawings correctly here, it looks like there's a well that's within the building. Is that a sandpoint, a drilled well?
I honestly never had to touch it, so I don't even know what kind of well it is.
But that's the water that services your building?
Yep, yep. Yeah, it's actually inside the shop.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
Yeah.
And there's no other water. And then one final question I've got. Back when that was Boo Oil or Ottman's Oil, or going back, you know, when it was first put in place, there were tanks there. Is there any ongoing inspections by the state of Minnesota for testing of?
All, it all passed.
Underground issues?
Well, when I got it, it was in the, they removed all the tanks, and then they drilled like, I think it was fourteen test wells around the building, and then they tested them, and then, I rented it for ten years before I purchased it because I wouldn't purchase it unless the ground was clear. So then the state wrote that off, that it was cleared.
Okay, and so there's no ongoing testing by EPA or the state of Minnesota any further?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay, just hold on, being Brent asked that question, just for the record. So when you talk about burning your oil, that's through a heater, right? You got an oil burner heater, that's what you're using it for?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I just figured we better clarify that for the record, so. George?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Another question on the way, so, so do you need a permit from the MPC to burn that, or? I know, I know, I've got a friend that's in a, got a shop, and I don't, I guess I'm just looking for information.
Right, yeah, I guess I've never been approached by it or anything like that, so, yeah, I just buy the burner and, I guess.
I don't think there is, but I was just seeing what you knew about that.
I've never seen anything that wasn't.
Yeah, they are rated to burn waste oil.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Amy.
They do sell wa- waste oil burners that are approved for that, and so as long as you're purchasing and utilizing one that, that meets that, you're fine.
Okay, thanks, Amy. And another question, where do your tires go?
I've been hauling them to Crowing Recycling, but now I got D and G, I sent, he's gonna start taking them.
Okay, and they're licensed?
Yep.
Okay, and Eastside L, they take your antifreeze, they take all the fluids that you?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all I had. Brent didn't cover. Thank you.
John, you have anything?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So maybe, just so we get a little bit more information, do you want to just go into, you know, why you're doing this addition? Kind of what's your weeks normally entail, is like, how many cars you work on, or maybe just give us an overview of your whole operation?
Okay, well, it's like, usually on average, a three vehicles a day. So, some days we'll have fifteen people stop in, and some days it's none. It's just me working, so.
Okay, so probably fifteen vehicles a week, fifteen, twenty, ten to twenty, every week varies.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, yep. Like now, I'm booked till the twenty-fifth of this month, so.
Okay.
And then people drop vehicles off and say, get to it when you can, and then it gets overflow like that, and it's, so that's how it gets that.
So then what was the reasoning for this addition, just so you could do a couple different things, or?
Yeah, more space.
Start one car and then go to another one?
And tire space for used tire, or new tires and stuff like that that come in, and so just to get them out of the way and put that parts out of the way and stuff like that, so.
Okay, and then I see you didn't plan on no employees, which you could have a few. That's what our permit allows, but how about, so I'm assuming there's a restroom there if people use it, okay? Sewer should be up to date, otherwise you wouldn't be able to move forward, I suppose.
Yeah, we had it tested and, so.
Um, then one thing too, we have to decide. You, we need an end date. So you had this before, I'm assuming it was, I don't even know what it was. Do you remember what the permit would expire? When it would expire, was it when you didn't have the property, Amy, do you know?
Mr. Chair, this use was established before land use controls were even into effect, so that's why we're running him through the interim use permit, because he is a conforming use, however, expansion is what's driving the IUP. So this has never been permitted before through this process.
Okay, so then he needs an end date, he never had one, okay.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, normally what we do is this, this, this permit goes with you, it don't go with the property, okay? So we have to have an end date, okay? Some people, either it's when you no longer own the property, or if you sell the business, or a family member takes it over or whatever, so. I'm just asking what would work for you to, it'd help us come up with what we do for an end date for this.
When I would sell it.
When you, when you no longer own the property, okay? So that'll be another condition we'll put on with the three that you seen. We just put that end date. The end date would be when you no longer own the property.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's all I had for questions too. A lot of them got answered, kind of how your business worked. The only thing maybe, I don't know, I don't know what your guys' thoughts are, or if that's something maybe the Commissioners will do, but one thing we probably gotta work on is keeping them, I don't know if we need to put a condition on or not, but so you don't have so many cars that are just junk sitting there.
I know that, that's, needs to be always addressed, so.
Okay, because that's, that's the biggest issue, I says, other than that, that, that business has been there forever. And, and that stuff now you're gonna add on, so you're gonna have less places to park the junk cars or parts or whatever.
It was when their scrap was really cheap, nobody wanted to even take it or car, and so they'd bring it in for repair, and it was, wasn't worth fixing. So then I'd give them a couple hundred bucks for it, and then that's where it ended up, and.
Okay, okay, so that's one thing you gotta really just watch that.
Get rid of it, yeah, I, I lost money doing that, so. Living, learning.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Brent.
A question for Amy, in the ag area for businesses, what is the restrictions for vehicles on a property or a commercial property? Because this, this would be a IUP, but it's gonna be ag, right? And, and commercial, or is this not commercial, just ag?
This property is zoned agriculture. The use, an automotive repair shop is allowed with an interim use permit in the ag zoning district. The, so the underlying zoning remains agriculture. The tax classification for this is commercial, because that's the way the property is being used, but those are different animals. Junkyards are not allowed within the ag zoning district, and so with an automotive repair, it's, it's known and understood that there will be cars there for repair. But this, and one of the things we discussed with the applicant at the development review team meeting is this is walking a fine line between becoming kind of two uses, a junkyard and an automotive repair. And since that use is not allowed within the ag zoning district, that's something that we wanted to address.
So, so in furtherance of Clint's line of questioning or thought, the limited number of vehicles moving forward might be something the board wants to consider here to give the County Board maybe some ideas on what they might want to do with that.
Maybe I'll ask you, Robert, what would be if, what would you think would be a good number if we'd put a restriction on? How many salvage cars that would be allowed there?
I would say fifteen.
Oh, I was thinking way lower than that.
Mr. Chair.
Question, are you saying salvage, like he would use just lying around for parts? Or ones that are parked there for repair that eventually would be picked up?
Salvage.
Okay, I'm not comfortable with fifteen cars. That's way over.
Yeah.
I was thinking you meant the whole, sitting there all the, or repairs and everything like that.
Like junk cars.
Yeah, no, I don't want any there, to tell you the truth.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So if you, if you pull up the suggested conditions again, no outdoor storage of vehicles or vehicle components, except for the vehicles on site specifically for service, shall be located on the property. So I think the condition reads already that, so if you put a number to it, now you're gonna try eliminating his business based on what may or may not be.
No, yeah, yep.
Let's just take the condition number three, and I think you probably covered, and you don't want them on-site, you've had enough questions about them. Probably just firm up the, the next answer they're all going and take care of it.
Yeah, no, good point. Yeah, no, I don't want to restrict how many you could have for repair. Granted, we don't want cars sitting there for two months and have twenty-five on there, but, and that's, you're the business guy, so. Okay, you fine with that, Brent? Like John's statement, I think that, that clears it up a little bit, yeah?
I just wanted there to be some discussion about it, because I think that's something that the County Board of Commissioners might be concerned about as well, is what's out there in moving forward. If there's an expansion, there's gonna be less room. So what, what are you, what are your plans with the vehicles that are there currently, and that is to remove as many as you can?
Yep.
Yeah.
I know the insurance company doesn't even like them later on, so.
Okay. Okay, so I guess at this time, you guys have any more questions? Okay, we'll move it to the, if there's anybody in the audience, or any, we'll open up the public comment. So if there's anybody has any public comment, please go up to the podium. And I have to ask three times before closing it, so is there any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll close this portion of the meeting to the public. Okay, we'll go through our criteria questions, then. Okay, question one, the use will not put an excess burden on roadways, utilities, and public facilities such as parks and schools. John?
Uh, no, with the number of customers that we are looking at here, and with what he's able to take on, as he's mentioned, a single, single employee, the roadways aren't, aren't gonna be a big burden, either the utilities, and we're not really anywhere near public facilities at this point with this application or this property, so that's a, that's a no.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have anything to add to question one?
Or, yes, I'm sorry, I said no.
No, that's.
Yeah.
Okay, if not, we'll move to question two. The request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area. I believe it'll be fine. It's already established business, he's looking at just adding on. If anything, it's probably gonna clean it up a little bit. We had discussions on not having all junk cars around there and things like that. More of them vehicles that are gonna get fixed are gonna be in. It'll tidy things up. So I don't think people are gonna notice much other than maybe a little better looking around there. So I, I think, yeah, there's, I would have to say yes to question two also, just, it's not gonna be detrimental. It's gonna be something that's always there. A lot of people might not know unless they see one that's getting constructed, so. Anybody have anything to add to question two? Now we'll move on to question three. The use and opinion of the Planning Commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and environment. Groundwater, surface water, and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by the proposed use. Brent?
Uh, I think we heard from the applicant that the fluids are gonna be, continue to be removed, or disposed of by Eastside Oil. Continuation of burning oil for heat with an approved furnace. Tire disposal going to D and G. The nearest creek, as I see it, is over a half a mile away. I don't think that that's a major issue there for the groundwater. Surface water, things are contained inside. There's no floor drains in there. There is an approved septic system in place that we heard about tonight. And I don't believe that any air quality in the surrounding area is gonna be adversely affected by this use.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything to add to question three? If not, we'll move to question four. The use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. George?
Uh, yes, it's an established business, been there since nineteen ninety-eight. It's existing commercial use, an ag zone which is permitted with an IUP. We're adding office space only and some storage, so it shouldn't, shouldn't really change much at the end of the day.
Okay, anybody have anything else to add to question four? If not, we'll move to question five. Is the use, the use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county? Marvin?
Uh, yes, and if you go to goal A one, objective six, goal A two, this one stands out more so to achieve appropriate balance between the continuing and growing desire for people, certain businesses to locate in rural business settings and need to accommodate agriculture and other rural land uses in the same area. Majority of your customers, I'm sure, are farmers and people that live out in the country there, and there's a shortage of mechanics the way it is in shops, so by that, we're achieving that.
Okay, thank you, Marv. Anybody else have anything to go with question five? Okay, if not, we'll proceed to vote on our questions, and keep in mind our, basically four conditions, the three that we had suggested, and then with the end date. That one would be included for when they no longer own the property. So keep them in mind when you're voting. Okay, question one, the use will not put excess burden on roadways, utilities, and public facilities such as parks and schools. John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
Question two, the request will not be detrimental to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant area. Myself, Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Question three, the use and the opinion of the Planning Commission is reasonably related to the existing land use and the environment. Groundwater, surface water, and air quality in the surrounding area will not be adversely affected by their proposed use. Brent?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Question four, the use is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. George?
Yes.
Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
Question five, the use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan or the water plan of the county. Marvin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Myself, Clint is yes. Brent?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Okay, it looks like all the questions were answered in affirmative, so I guess we could take a motion to recommend approval, if somebody'd want to do that.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve this with the four conditions and the fifth with the end date when no longer owning the property. Be moved forward to the next County Board of Commissioners meeting.
Okay.
I'll second Mr. Chairman.
Okay, George. Okay, we got a motion to, made to recommend approval to, with the conditions to the County Board of Commissioners. All in favor, say aye. Brent?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Myself, Clint is aye. So I guess we're gonna recommend approval to the County Board of Commissioners. That meeting is on June eighteenth. If you have any questions in between now and the eighteenth, contact Amy or one of the staff at Land Services.
And then we notify it after that or something, or?
Yes, so I'll, I'll bring this request to the regular County Board meeting that morning. You are absolutely welcome to attend. Otherwise, you can call like late morning to find out what the decision of the board was. If it is approved, you can come in and apply for your land use permit anytime.
Yeah, I think I got that done already.
Are, do we have it on hold? Do you know?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so if you have already applied for it, we would go ahead and process it. If you haven't, you'd go ahead and apply, okay?
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. You're free to go. Thank you. Okay, I guess we got minutes from May twenty-eighth to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from May twenty-eighth.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded to approve the May twenty-eighth minutes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, minutes are approved. New business, I think the only thing we got is probably just a reminder that we got new County ordinance things to put in our packet, and we can take all of our old ones out except for the Mississippi Headwaters section.
Yeah, I think you have the Mississippi Headwaters Board ordinance. Yeah, I think you have the Mississippi Headwaters Board ordinance, I think, um, so we'll make sure you don't discard that. Uh, but you can pluck out your whole county ordinance and replace it with what you've got in front of you.
So that'll be good, cause we had some other sheets, and I know mine's getting kind of messed up, so this'll be nice to clean it up again.
Yeah, and then Mr. Chair, I just have, uh, for the July sixteenth meeting, I'll be bringing the floodplain ordinance, and so in that ordinance packet that you have, that's section uh, one thousand, we are essentially going to replace the existing section one thousand with a new one, and that is due to FEMA remapping and adoption of the ordinance. It's gonna be a very straightforward adoption because it's a mandatory adoption, so um, you will get a draft of that, but there's really not a whole lot to talk about with that one. Um, and so I think uh, on the planning commission's side, I believe that is all I've got for new business.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Um, any old business? Um, I can't think of any at this time.
I don't have any, Mr. Chair.
So I guess at this time, we take a motion adjourned.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Marv.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Okay.
Second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded, adjourned. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.